Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the December 23rd meeting of the governing body to order. Madam Clerk, for the last time, would you take the role?
Here.
Mr. Escobell.
I'm here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Laborn.
Gentlemen.
Dr. Rennie.
Present.
Mr. Roybel.
Here.
Mr. Seagrave.
Present.
Mr. White.
Present.
Dr. Aldridge.
Present.
Mayor Collins.
Merry Christmas.
And Mr. Cook.
Here for the last time.
Ditto. One member is absent, Mayor. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is number four, Consent Agenda. All agenda items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests, and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
Thank you very much. Before we get a motion on the consent agenda, or see if anybody has something they want to remove, I have a conflict on number 18, so I will not be voting on the consent agenda. My wife is an officer in one of the banks that's on our list, so I won't be voting on that, but I will handle the consent agenda operation. Is there anybody having something they'd like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Mr. Roybel, seconded by Mr. Seagrave. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The consent agenda is approved, and if you'd note it, I declare a conflict.
Yes. Number six, ordinance on third reading, amending subsections 6.6.3. B. 3, 6.7.5. C., and 6.9.4. E. of the Unified Development Code, UDC, changing building facade design requirements for multifamily residential development.
All right, we have a UDC amendment before us modifying the required facade materials on multifamily developments. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this ordinance before us? Mr. Stevens, welcome. We're back in our proper order. I like it.
Mayor, Council, Jason Stevens, Gateway Construction. Just wanted to speak real quick on this item. I know there's been a lot of talk about cost and whether it's justified to make a change here to help with the affordable housing. I would just like to point out, I do believe there is a cost difference. Initially, I just went through today and came up with some actual quotes that we had for doing stone versus stucco versus siding. So just real quick, per square foot, stone is about $17 per square foot. Stucco comes in at about $12 a square foot, and then most of your, whether it be hardboard siding or different types of normal siding, run at about eight bucks a square foot. So I do believe it does help cost-wise, but more than that, I think it's more about just having choices. I think that, you know, just making it specific to a specific material really limits what we can do, and, you know, I feel that it's important that we have choices and that we, you know, depending on the look that we're going for and the type of client that we're trying to, you know, build for, I believe that that's an important aspect to this also.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagrave.
Could we ask a question?
Of course you can. Thank you.
Through you. You indicated, you mentioned affordable housing. You understand that we've already approved that, correct? This is for standard housing, not affordable.
But I still think that there's an-
Mr. Stevens.
Go ahead.
Sorry, through you, Mayor. Mr. Seagrave, I believe that it's still an affordability issue because it gives us options. So when we're building on multifamily products, even if it's not specific to maybe making it affordable housing by the definition, it can all, but it can play into the affordability of that particular project.
Mr. Seagrave, one more. Is there, I'd want to put just you on the spot here, but in your industry, is there any evidence at all that this savings that you're talking about has ever passed on to the consumer?
Mr. Stevens.
And how do you document that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Seagrave, so it's difficult to document it, and me being, you know, having multifamily products and, you know, projects that we've kept and that we lease out, and then also having built product, you know, projects for other people and other developers, I think a big part for them is it gives them that flexibility. So as, it's all about whether or not you have it, at what price you have it occupied, right? So if you have that ability to modify your price that you're asking on a home, or on a, not a home, but a multifamily project or product, and you're trying to get it occupied, and you're able to, you know, work your price down in order to accomplish that, then that gives you a lot more flexibility.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagrave.
Last one, I promise. Today, I drove by Ridgeview Apartments. It's on Converse, behind the Walmart. It's obviously a very nice new complex. They're still building it. They have the stone, the 30% requirement, but then they have also used lap siding. I believe it's probably fiberboard. I'm not sure on that. But they've also used EFIS or Drive-It. So they're still making the rest of the building look unique by changing up the other 70%. So why is this 30% so important?
Because I think it gives you options so that you're not stuck with just-
But you have options for 70% of the building.
Right, but you don't have options on the stone, and I think that-
Brick.
Brick or stone. But I think that it really does limit what you can do, and it does limit you at cost. Like, stone is one of the most expensive, stone or brick, or one of the most expensive, you know, the most expensive exterior finishes that you can put on a building. And if you allow some flexibility, you can redo, you may reduce costs, but you can also allow for a lot of flexibility in design. You know, on a lot of projects that we look at, stone is dated, and so is brick. We look at a lot of different finishing opportunities and architectural features on buildings that have nothing to do with stone. And so restricting that to stone is just over-restrictive.
Mr. Seagrave?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Appreciate you being here.
No questions.
Mr. Escobell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. So when you do a big project and you buy in larger quantities, then that helps bring that cost down when you buy in wholesale, correct?
Mr. Stevens?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It does bring the cost down, but it brings it down for everything. So the delta, or the difference between the cost of siding versus stone, is still about the same, even though maybe on a bigger project, maybe the stone goes down to $15 a square foot, but so would siding also go down.
Okay. Then depending on the time of year, would certain products be cheaper than others?
So putting up a masonry product in the middle of winter is quite a bit more expensive because then you have temporary heat concerns.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Aldridge, do you have a question?
I do. Thank you. Mayor Collins, through you. I was just curious, when we talk about multifamily residential development, we're not talking about that you're usually building a spec property, right, and putting it out there. Usually someone's coming to you and saying, "I want to build, you know, X number of fourplexes," or a development, you know, X number of buildings. Is that true?
Mr. Stevens?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's not necessarily true. So the project that we're currently working on now, that's in Sweetgrass, which is 29 fourplexes, those are actually being built and sold individually. So we're building, the majority of those actually start out as specs and then are sold.
Thank you.
Anybody else for a developer that happens to be here this evening? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else in the audience want to speak to the requirement on facade materials?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the Council, Brandon Swain, Ward Three. Just want to highlight, this doesn't just affect multifamily properties for rent. My understanding is the UDC, this particular section also affects attached townhomes that are three or more units, which I, I don't know why, but I tend to have an affinity for these types of projects in infill areas. I'm on the agenda a little bit later with a project at Fitz Street in Snyder. I think some areas it makes sense to have it, and I think other areas, perhaps not. To Mr. Seagrave's point, I would love for the Fitz Street towns to be delivered at a price point of maybe $250,000. Unable to do that, I've really got to reduce the size. I may or may not put a garage in. They've got to be one level. Can't afford a basement and still be able to hold that price point. Stone or brick is just one minor piece of that equation, but it really does take a concentrated effort to try and price something that low and make it attainable. Whether this policy passes or not, Cary Cottage, which is currently under construction, is probably still going to have an element of brick or stone. You're up against a Brainerd Junior High, that's 100% masonry. Probably makes sense in that area to do something a little bit nicer. So I don't develop properties for rent. I develop them primarily for sale. That being said, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, man. Appreciate you, sir.
Thank you.
Online?
Mr. Dorsh, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Dorsh.
Good evening, Mayor Collins. City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. My camera's off due to Wi-Fi connection, so I will be brief and say I agree with Mr. Stevens and Mr. Swain. And as serving on the Affordable Housing Task Force, again, we understand that this requirement has been lifted for affordable housing developments between 0 to 80% of the area median income, but removing it could help market rates come down as well because you're not adding costs to those developments just because of a look of something. It gives a developer choice, and it's a market choice that is not being allowed. And there are units in the community on South Avenue C, Granite Springs Apartments, with no brick and stone, and it's an aesthetic choice. Those look better to me than some of the other brick and stone developments around town. So again, allowing that choice is what I support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsh.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagrave.
Could I ask?
Mr. Dorsh, hang on a second.
As part of the Affordable Housing Committee, you brought this forward initially. Did you ever document the savings or the costs? I hear a lot of times we're doing this to save money and save costs and pass it on to the consumer, but rarely do I hear numbers. Do you have those?
Dan, are you still with us?
Mayor Collins, through you. Mr. Seagrave, not to my knowledge that we looked at them on the task force. If we did, I'd be more than happy to look through notes, if there are. But I know there were multiple meetings that you were in that Mr. Stevens had given you numbers as well as he did today, at those cost savings.
Mr. Roybel, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience? Nobody else online? All right, hearing none. We'll go to Mr. Roybel for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, the motion to approve on third and final reading failed at the Public Services Committee, therefore there is no recommendation. However, for the sake of discussion, I move to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Rennie. We'll go to the city governing body for comments. Comments from members of the governing body. Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, prior to last Public Services Committee meeting, I'd never heard any numbers. And so I tried to just look online, and I believe we've shared this with you, some material and installation costs. And if you look at everything from aluminum siding at the top, all the way down to vinyl siding at the bottom of the form, you'll see that there is some differences in cost, but they're not substantial. Brick ranges, according to this document, from eight to $18 a foot. Steel siding from seven to $16 a foot. Cedar shake siding, seven to 16. So my point is, if we're doing this for a cost savings, there's really not a significant cost savings. I think if you put up a fourplex or an eightplex and you put up vinyl siding, perhaps you'd save some money. But of course, we know that doesn't last very well in our hail-prone environment. So if the issue is cost, and that's what I've heard more than anything, there's really not that substantial cost saving. Thank you.
Dr. Rennie.
Not so fast, my friend. We, I understand where my colleague from Ward Two is coming from. As one of the early proponents of the UDC, I mean, we did want to make improvements in Cheyenne. We wanted to see Cheyenne become a more attractive place. And I think we've been pretty successful over the past few years of doing that. However, I don't think that by removing the requirement for stone, we're going to start getting unattractive flat-surface apartments. If we do, I will be one of the first people in here to introduce a motion to rescind this ordinance. But I think if you look around town, at the apartments on just north of Walmart that the councilman referred to, I drive past those constantly. You don't even notice the stone on those. What you do notice is the different projections, the different elevations. And I think that we are going to find that there will be some savings to this, and as President Escobell said in a discussion to me, that problem will be passed on to the consumer. The competition, I think, for apartments is getting tighter in the community, and I think anytime you can help reduce your price point and keep your occupancy up, I think we will see that. Finally, this was, even though we've dealt with affordable housing, this was a recommendation of the Affordable Housing Task Force. I think we've had developers say that it should be a savings, and there is a fairly good chance that the consumer will see some of that savings. So I think we should give it a try. Again, if we start getting really ugly, flat-sided buildings with, then I'll admit I was wrong and look to rescind the ordinance.
Mr. Seagrave.
One final. Mr. Mayor, I had the honor, I guess, of traveling this weekend. I was in Steamboat Springs, and of course, being a tourist town, there's tons and tons and tons of multifamily housing there. And I'm very conscious of it now because of this. And when you drive around and you see the quality that they have developed in their community, you can tell there's a great deal of pride. They have established requirements, and I'm just afraid, we've reduced so many requirements trying to make affordable housing here, which I don't think we're making much of an impact, to be honest with you. But, I mean, we've reduced the landscaping requirements, both on commercial and multifamily. We've done a number of different things, and at some point, we're going to look back at this and say, "Why? It didn't make a difference in the price point," or a substantial difference, very, very minimal. And yet, we've got a product out there that's going to be there for generations, and it's not going to be a quality, in my opinion, it won't be a quality view for our community. So I believe when we established the UDC roughly 20 years ago, we're getting close to that now, 15 years ago, it was our intent, the governing body, to improve the appearance, the presentation of our community, and we're slowly whittling away at it. We're, we're just, well, you know how I feel. Thank you.
Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins, through you. I guess I also was under the impression, the only citation that I've heard for this argument has been cost. But I did hear Mr. Stevens talk tonight about choice, developer choice, and I think that I've seen several multifamily dwellings go up in the county that are attractive, and have talked to some builders who avoid building within our city limits. They much prefer to build in the county pockets or in the county areas where they're not held to some of these standards. And those multifamily facilities have been fairly attractive. I also think that people who are looking for an upper end, and I believe the apartments behind Walmart are actually being advertised as luxury apartments, with a swimming pool, indoor swimming pool, and fitness room and all sorts of things, I think that those individuals who are seeking those are going to be willing to pay more for the amenities and for a nicer-looking, aesthetically pleasing product. I'm not sure that young people necessarily see brick and stone as being as aesthetically pleasing as my colleague from Ward Two and I do. But I think that there is something to be said for designer choice. I look at some of the projects we've got, had done in Ward Three that I would say are extremely ugly, but people tend to be renting those. And so this evening, I'm going to go ahead and vote yes on this because I think that the market will determine what is created and what is able to be rented. And I would hope that developers would also take into account maintenance cost, ongoing maintenance cost, and durability.
Anyone else in the governing body? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you take the vote?
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escobell.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Dr. Rennie.
Yes.
Mr. Roybel.
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave.
No.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldridge.
Yes.
And Mayor Collins.
Yes. This ordinance is approved on third and final reading.
Next item is number seven, ordinance on third reading, amending Chapter 2.16.010 of the Municipal Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, requiring the City Treasurer to annually evaluate and report to the governing body any outstanding debt owed to the city by any city board, council, or member, or commission member.
All right, we have a new requirement that was being proposed by this ordinance that would ask us to review our debt rolls, to see if any city council member or a candidate to be appointed to a board or commission owes the city money. I would like to go out to the audience, see if anybody has a comment on that. Hearing none. Dr. Aldridge.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
Been seconded by Mr. Johnson. Comments from members of the governing body. Dr. Aldridge. Did you have a comment? No?
No, I was waiting to vote. Sorry.
Comments? Hearing none.
Mr. or Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escobell.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Dr. Rennie.
Yes.
Mr. Roybel.
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
And Dr. Aldridge.
Yes.
The ordinance is approved on third and final reading.
Next item is number eight, ordinance on third reading, amending Chapter 8.68, Camping on Public Property of the Municipal Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, expanding the general prohibition on camping to all public property of the city, creating a permitting process, making conforming amendments, and repealing obsolete provisions.
All right, following the Grants Pass decision at the Supreme Court, this ordinance would outlaw camping on public property, but does, I'll offer a permit process for things like the Girl Scouts and Frontier Days. I'll go out to the audience and see if anybody wants to speak to this. Anybody? Hearing none. Mr. Roybel.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Johnson. Comments from members of the governing body. Hearing none, ma'am.
Dr. Aldridge.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escobell.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Dr. Rennie.
Yes.
Mr. Roybel.
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
And Mr. White.
Yes.
The ordinance is approved on third and final reading.
Next item is number nine, ordinance on second reading, annexing to the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, land located north of Cheyenne Street and west of, and adjacent to Ridge Road.
All right, we have an owner-initiated annexation request. This land is actually in part of a county pocket, and they're looking to get water and sewer services. We'll go out to the audience, see if anybody wants to speak to this annexation request. Hearing none. Mr. Roybel.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments from members of the governing body on the annexation. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance is approved on second reading.
Next item is number 10, ordinance on second reading, amending the official zoning map of the City of Cheyenne, establishing the zoning classification of MR, medium-density residential, for land annexed to the City of Cheyenne, located north of Cheyenne Street and west of, and adjacent to Ridge Road.
All right. Again, we have a piece of property we just voted to annex, and we need to give it a city zone. And the closest one to that, that's in the county currently, is the MR Zone. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak to this establishment of a zone? Mr. Roybel.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments from members of the governing body. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? This ordinance is also approved on second reading.
Number 11, ordinance on second reading, amending the official zoning map of the City of Cheyenne, establishing the zoning classification of AG Agriculture for land being annexed to the city at Lot 1, Block 1, North Range Substation, Laramie County, Wyoming, located south of Happy Jack Road and west of Burns Way.
All right. We recently annexed the North Range Business Park and established the zoning there, but apparently we missed one spot, which was agricultural. So we're going back to fix that now, and we're going to make that one agricultural. If anybody in the audience wants to speak to that, please come forward. Hearing none. Mr. Roybel.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded again by Mr. Seagrave. Comments from members of the governing body on the zone change. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? This ordinance is also approved on second reading.
Number 12, ordinance on second reading, amending the official zoning map of the City of Cheyenne, establishing the zoning classification of AG Agriculture for land located northeast of the intersection of West Allison Road and Waltersheide Boulevard.
All right, we have a parcel of land that was annexed, looks like maybe 40 years ago, but for some reason was never given a city zone district. And so we'll go out to the audience to talk about this. I would like to let you know that the developer has pulled the request to create a work camp on this site. So all we're really talking about at this time is just the annexation.
With the zone.
Or the zone, zone change. Thank you, sir. Did you want to come forward, Ms. Sayers? Come on, guys.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, Lee Filer, Ward One. I believe I got a lot of phone calls again today when they seen this on the agenda the other night, when the landowner decided to pull their use. Everybody was happy, but they're still worried about the zone change because the zone change still allows for work camps. I believe that if, well, a lot of folks believe, and they brought it to my attention, is that if it's being requested by the landowner for a zone change, everybody would like to know what the intended use is now, going to be, just for more transparency. You know, so with that, I just, you know, everybody's just worried about the transparency of this. They're afraid it's going to get rezoned, it's going to get zoned what the original intent was for, and that use is in there. So now we're all going to have to start this whole process over and have a big public outcry over a work camp. But, so I'm asking the city if you all would vote no on the zone change until we actually have an intended use by the landowner. Thanks.
Ms. Sayers?
Mr. Mayor, can I have that gentleman's name, please?
Mr. Filer.
Yeah.
He's done this enough. He ought to get that. Please, sir.
Mayor, through you. John Sayers, agent for TrueGrit. So I am here to continue to ask for the A1 AG, just as you've approved two or three others tonight that is, the zoning is adjacent to or similar in nature. We would continue to like to do that with the A1 AG. I can feel comfortable at this moment saying 100%. I'm pretty sure that staff's probably going to look at removing your work camp designation from the UDC because based off of our due diligence and trying to submit our stuff under the code. We were simply following the rules and the need of the community. Recognizing that and seeing that the PSC meeting didn't move forward with a recommendation at that time, or no, we still choose to go ahead based on, we brought this forward to continue to ask for an A1 to AG and move the property until we decide further what it is. So without that, we would be simply submitting an application that got- So without that, we would be simply submitting an application that got tonight, and we paid the money for it, that we would come back and do later on anyway. So we'd prefer just to go ahead and continue our A1 AG.
Ms. Sayers, is this just a holding zone then for you until you make a decision on what development might happen in the future?
Mayor through you, yes, with working with staff and everything, A1 AG is the holding zone for when it comes in from the county to the city.
Thank you. Anybody have a question for the developer's agent?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Aldridge?
Mayor Collins through you, I'm just curious, knowing, you know, that your intention is not to do a man camp at this point on that property, is there any other zoning that you would be satisfied with other than the AG zoning?
Ms. Sayers?
Mayor through you, at this time, it's still A1 AG. We, if, to answer your question that you addressed at the PSC and again tonight, we literally would have to remove this, and I would have to resubmit again to start this process all over. There is no way with the notifications and everything that we have done to do our due diligence in this, we'd have to re-notify everybody over there and every, and all the adjacent landowners and put it in the newspaper. So at this point, again, I would just continue to ask that we go from an A1 to an AG, which is a very common question. I would like to point out one other thing. We talked about transparency. We started our submittal with transparency. We were clear on what we were trying to do and what we were asking for, and I think that shot me in the foot a little bit. If I had come in and just said we wanted to do A1 AG, I think I'd probably be on consent or getting close to that a lot more. But we did actually be transparent, and we pointed out that through the code, we were trying to do what is allowable under the code. So if that answers your question.
Dr. Rennie?
I have questions for staff. I can wait till we have a motion.
All right, Sayers, thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience want to speak to the zone change? Hearing none. Mr. Royball.
Mr. Mayor, the motion to approve on second reading failed at the Public Services Committee, therefore there is no recommendation. However, for the sake of discussion, I move to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Rennie. Comments from members of the governing body? Dr. Rennie?
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask, I presume Mr. White's been the one handling this most of the way through. So even though, even though the request to the Board of Public Utilities for the, for the use, obviously, we still, the request for the zone change is still alive coming from the applicant. And is it, and I presume it's true, this is pretty much our standard practice to use an AG zone as our holding zone? Is that correct?
Mr. White?
Mayor, Connor White, Planning and Development Department. Mayor through you, yes, that is correct. The AG zone in the UDC is considered our holding zone. So if somebody is annexing or they're rezoning a property and they don't know what they want to use that property for, we usually have them go to AG because it is an easier zone to zone from to a specific zone, depending on what that proposed use is going to be.
And then, Mr. Mayor, it's also, isn't it also, my understanding that it's accurate that if we have the application, if the landowner's request is AG, we cannot arbitrarily change that to something we think suits us better? Is that accurate?
Mayor through you, that is correct.
Okay, and then to follow up on Mr. Sayers' comment, if we deny the AG, then he has to go back through the entire process and the extra fees and do it all over again? Whereas if we approve this, it's somewhat simpler for him to change it to whatever zone he determines fits later on?
Mayor through you, if council was to deny this, it stays a county zone, basically has no regulations on it. And then, yes, Mr. Sayers would have to resubmit, go through planning commission, notification, all that. Even with rezoning this to AG, if they choose to rezone it to a different use later, they will have to do all that again.
There's still notifications.
There's still the notification process, but being they don't, they don't have a proposed use at this time, AG is the holding zone. Otherwise, if this is voted down, we basically have a county zone within city limits with no zoning.
Mr. White, that brings a question to mind for me.
That's what I was thinking.
And that is, if we have a county zone on city property, how do we handle nuisance and things like that, or zoning violations where people do things if there's no regulations?
Mayor through you, I don't know if we would handle anything on that property. There is no governing, there's no city governing regulations on that property.
So, let's follow up, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dr. Rennie?
Then, I mean, it's still kind of in limbo, then if it's in the city, but it has no zone, it has a county zone. If the developer did choose to build something on it, Mr. Bloom, how would, I mean, could he just build on it because we don't, we would not be doing the inspections, or how? I mean, does anybody know?
It's a great question.
Mayor, members of the board, that's a great question. Through you too, Dr. Rennie, what we would do is not approve a building permit or a site plan review because there is no applicable review criteria to review the application. It would be cleanest and best to have that ag zoning put in place right now so we'd have clear review criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to our staff. I just, to follow up, if we, this is pretty much our standard process or procedure. We've gone through this multiple times on different properties over the year. And if we hadn't known the intended use, this probably would have been a slam dunk. It never would have been really gotten to this stage. So I would hope all of us would remember that we do need to give it a zone. Obviously, it's gone 40 years without a zone, so another month or so probably isn't, you know, another period of time probably isn't that big of a deal, but we do need to assign it a zone. AG is our standard process. And if the developer were to do something like decided to change his mind and wanted to make another run at a man camp, he still has to go through Board of Adjustments, and then he has to come back to us for a contract which we have to approve. So, so we still have some control over what happens there. So I would, as I said, this is our standard practice. I would urge us to just zone it, get it over with, and go from there.
Dr. Aldridge, do you have a question?
I do. Thank you. Mayor Collins through you, I'm just curious, because it has not had a city zone for 40 years, I, and I appreciate the developer's transparency and willingness to, you know, share that information even though he wasn't required to. I'm wondering how, and because I don't want the developer to have to go back through the expense and the time, I think that's, we need to honor that as well. I'm wondering if we were to, how, I guess, what I'm thinking is, is if we were to table this, would we be able to get a UDC change to AG1, to remove man camp, to come forward at the same time that that would come forward in two weeks?
Mr. Bloom?
Mayor through you, Dr. Aldridge, the correct answer is yes, we could. However, we do get back into a discussion that we had at our last council meetings regarding the sale of the property for the part of the parking lot adjacent to Holiday Park, where it could be perceived as a contract zoning. So that could be something that could be of concern in the event that we would only approve the zoning if something else had happened, so it could have the perception of a contract. A potential option, and I'd let the city attorney weigh in on this and correct me if necessary, and if the clerk would as well, is it could be an option to remand it back to the planning commission for further review and study, and if they were able to come to an agreement on a potential alternative zone district that might be more in line with the comprehensive plan, which shows as mixed-use commercial, that they could restart the process under the current application. I'm seeing some heads shaking no that they're...
Your last meeting, we're going to make it tough on you.
I know. Mr. Mayor through you, Mr. Bloom, I would have to research that. I'm not sure about the reverting back. I, off the cuff, I would say no.
Ms. Boster, do you have an opinion?
Mr. Mayor through you, to Council, Stephanie Boster, City Attorney. We don't have a process for remanding back. It's a recommending body. It's not, it doesn't go the other direction. I'd also have concern about postponing the item because typically we'll postpone something to a date certain, and that would be indefinite. So I would recommend that we either approve it or deny it today.
Thank you. Dr. Aldridge?
Mayor Collins through you, I guess, I, I'm really torn because I understand the need to zone this, but I also understand that many residents on the south side of Cheyenne in Ward 1 feel like a lot of times things happen to them and in their community that they are not in favor of. And us doing this after hearing from so many of them that that is not, I would say that their trust factor in us and as, and government, governmental agencies in general is probably pretty low. And I'm not willing to vote in favor of this if there is any possibility that it could become a man camp, even if it has to come back through the process. I think sometimes entities use that as a way to delay the process long enough that people lose interest or lose track. And that would never, I don't believe that would be our intention as a governing body, but I think that that's a ploy commonly used. And so for that reason, I'm going to be a no vote unless we can figure out how to do this and assure that it would never become a man camp.
Mr. Seagrave?
Mr. Mayor, a couple of quick things. I voted no on this at Public Service, not because of the man camp, but because of the location. We have a number of schools in that area. We have residential, single-family residential housing right across the street. Honestly, I would vote no against removing this from the, removing man camps from the AG zoning. We need man camps. We have a lot of construction going on in this community, and there's nowhere for these folks to live. And to do a man camp, you have to have water and sewer, so you can't, you can't do a multi, you know, several hundred units necessarily out in the county without access to water and sewer. So I believe that needs to stay in the zoning classification. It's just the location of this one that I voted against. But I'm confident now that it's been withdrawn from the Board of Adjustments to do the man camp at this particular location, and the fact that it would have to come back through. So I'm going to vote yes tonight, understanding that there will not be a man camp at this location. Thank you.
Mr. Royball?
Mr. Mayor, just a question for staff.
Sir?
This, this location, 40 years has sat without a city zoning. Do we have any more, any more prob, or any more places, parcels like that in the city?
Mr. Bloom?
Mayor, members of council, through you, Councilmember Royball, yes, we actually finished up an inquiry today through our GIS department on all parcels that would be within the state limits that had county zone districts at the present time. We did find a handful, but those were just leftovers, some annexations that haven't been effectively put into the system. The area where the most areas of county zoning are is this particular area, which is a remnant of the Interior Height subdivision. It includes this property. It includes two properties owned by Black Hills Energy and another property owned by the US government. Those are, the three properties owned by those other entities are all utility substations, and one's a piece of vacant land right now for future public utilities for electric and stuff. Those are all Zone A1. And those are the only properties that we are clearly aware of that are not encompassing of a city zone district.
And we're working on plans to bring them in.
Mayor through to the council, yes, our intent, and it appears there's direction from the council, would be to move forward with a zoning ordinance that would essentially establish a city zone for those properties that were mentioned, notably the Black Hills Energy's properties and the US government-owned property. Those are shown as public on our future land use plan. However, the public zone district can only go to public entities. So we would have to zone the US government land public. We would likely zone the Black Hills Energy, the adjacent residential zone district that is nearby. With this subject parcel, if we were to include it in a staff-initiated zoning, we would fall on the comprehensive plan, which would show it as mixed-use commercial, which means it would have a mixed-use business zone district. If we do move forward with a staff zoning application based on council direction, we would assume all fees for notification, all responsibilities of notification, to send those out to the residents as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom. Mr. Johnson?
So, actually, I'm in support of the ag strictly on the principle we go on. When I looked at the Unified Development Code at that specific table, since it had a C under man camps for conditional use, it was always going to have to go to the Board of Adjustment. It was always going to have to have a contract. And when I sought out of when that was actually added into the UDC, I realized, or I was told that that was actually original script, that the people that approved the UDC when it was drafted actually viewed that man camps were probably going to be something that occurred in the future of Cheyenne, but they didn't want to have it go forward without any kind of provisions or other review. So they did put the C in that table. So even though the conditional use did not go in front of the Board of Adjustment, if it was to ever happen again where they went this direction, they would still, under the Unified Development Code, would have to still go through the conditional use in the contract of city councils. So there were fail safes that they drafted in it from the very beginning, so that's why I'm supporting it tonight.
Dr. Aldridge again?
Mayor Collins, I'm just curious through you, if, if we, if the applicant were to choose to change to a different code, or for a different zoning code, do we have the ability to mitigate the fees and things so that the, that individual or that applicant would not have to pay the fees again? And is there a way to, how many days are we talking that that would delay this project? Although it sounds like there's not really a project yet in mind.
Mr. Bloom?
Mayor through you, to Dr. Aldridge, we don't have a mechanism to waive the fees. So if the applicant were to refile for new application, they'd have to pay the application fee again. Regarding the timeline, if it were to be filed tomorrow, we would have about, I mean, it would, it would probably be wrapping up at the end of March with the zoning.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other comments from members of the governing body on the zone change? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the zone change, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
Mr. White and Dr. Aldridge are knows, the zone changes, establishment of the zone is approved on second reading.
Next item is number 13, ordinance on second reading, amending the official zoning map of the City of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from Plan Unit Development, PUD, ordinance number 4274, to NR3 Neighborhood Residential High Density for land located north of West College Drive, south of West Allison Road, and west of Waltershead Boulevard.
All right, we have a zone, an owner requested zone change of 44.16 acres to allow for a more dense development. Ms. Sayers, did you want to speak?
Mayor, John Sayers, TruGrit agent, yes, we are asking for the MDR zoning in the PUD to be removed and go back to an NR3 zoning, working with staff. We believe that the plat that we have intended to submit January 8th on expedited shows a different subdivision than what's used to being built in Cheyenne. We've been working with staff for six months in regards to an alley-loaded product through the area with combined different uses and different sizes of product, and we feel comfortable with that, but we can only do it with the NR3 zoning.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience want to speak to that? Hearing none. Mr. Royball?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
It's been seconded by Dr. Rennie. Comments from members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie?
I'm kind of interested to see how this project goes. I do like the fact it's something we haven't allowed for a while and that it's alley-loaded. However, I actually like that because it means you don't have a street front full of alleys or full of garage doors, is what I meant to say. So, and I get kind of tired of seeing that. So this is kind of a departure from what we've seen in developments in the past, and I'm kind of interested to see how it turns out.
Other comments? Mr. Seagrave?
Mr. Mayor, although we haven't seen the plat yet, my understanding, talking to the agent and testimony, is that this is really partially in response to the council's decision to go to smaller lot sizes, and here's your, here, here, I believe, is your direct savings from an affordability standpoint. This, I do believe, will, will create more affordable housing, more so than what we discussed earlier. So it's new, it's different. This is kind of the direction the council has given the development community to create some high density and some different ideas. So I'm going to support it, and we'll see what it looks like. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the zone change, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The zone change is also approved on second reading.
Number fourteen, ordinance on second reading, admitting section ten point one-two-point-zero-two-zero of municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, clarifying that failure to maintain liability coverage is a jailable offense.
All right, this ordinance resolves a conflict between our state law and our city ordinance that not having liability insurance on your vehicle is a jailable offense. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to that? All right, hearing none. Mr. Royble?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Seconded by Mr. Seigrafe. Comments from members of the governing body?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson?
For our city attorney, because state law appears to be more restrictive and city code is less restrictive, we basically have to approve this because we're not allowed to be less restrictive than state statute. Is that correct?
Ms. Boster?
Mr. Mayor, through you to Councilman Johnson. That's correct. And there's also inconsistency between the ordinance and the state statute for that very reason. So it's incredibly problematic.
And Ms. Boster, that makes it difficult for our prosecutor.
That's correct, yes, very.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we need a motion. Oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong item.
I wrote Mr. Seigrafe's name down. I thought I heard it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ordinance is approved on second reading.
Now we're at number sixteen.
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to sign a final plat for the Fifth Street Towns, City of Cheyenne, Laramie County, Wyoming, located southeast of the intersection of West Fifth Street and Snyder Avenue.
All right, this is a replat of a single infill lot into four very small town home lots with the hope that maybe it will create some affordability. Is there anybody in the audience wants to speak to that? Mr. Swain?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Brandon Swain, Board Three, Mayor through you to Dr. Rennie. I agree, I'm tired of seeing the front-load garages as well, so I'm not going to do it in this project. This area, if you're not familiar where it's at, it's directly across from Pine Wind Village. Those homes are between five hundred and six hundred and fifty square feet. Home to the south is, I don't even think it's even five hundred square feet. I'm proposing two-bed, two-bath townhomes on slab, little over seven hundred square feet, no garage as well. The combination of those factors should allow me to deliver a price point of around two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. I've been a realtor for nearly eleven years, and I don't know that I've seen a new construction product that's been available in my tenure at that price point. So I'm hoping to bring the change that I want to see with this project. That being said, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Swain. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience want to speak to the final plat before us? Hearing none. Mr. Royble?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation the Public Services Committee is to adopt with acknowledgement of relief in A, reducing the number of parking spaces per unit from two to one, and B, reducing the rear setback, and I so move.
It's been seconded by Mr. Seigrafe. Comments from members of the governing body? Mr. Seigrafe?
Mr. Mayor, I have concerns, I have concerns with parking and a lot of the things we've done. And in this particular situation, this will only have on-street parking. It's not a big project. I believe, I believe there's four units, so you're probably looking at eight cars. It's going to be congested on this block with on-street parking. And I'm, I've struggled in committee to vote yes for this, and I'm struggling now, but I'm going to vote yes for it. Again, it's a small project. It's a neighborhood that needs to have, have some development. But again, we're making a decision for, for decades, and there will never, ever be off-street parking for this. So just something to keep in mind. And again, I struggle with it, but I'm going to vote for it. Thank you.
Ms. Royble, do you have a comment, sir?
No.
All right, anybody else? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the final plat, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The final plat is adopted.
Next item is seventeen, resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to sign a final plat for Edgar Subdivision, City of Cheyenne, Laramie County, Wyoming, located north of Sullivan Street and adjacent to Panorama Drive.
All right, this is a plat to approve eleven single-family home lots. Anybody in the audience want to come to speak to this final plat before us? All right, hearing none. Mr. Royble?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to adopt, and I so move.
It's been seconded by Mr. Seigrafe. Comments from members of the governing body? Mr. Johnson?
For the city engineer, when the site plan comes forward, there's been a lot of discussion through the planning commission when they, this specific parcel came forward, where we, they appealed to the governing body, kind of to override what the planning commission's concerns, where there was hydrologists and everything else that came to the planning commission that spoke against this. And so one of the concerns is the drainage that's actually at this specific location, and then the potential of an actual large retaining wall that some people were worried might collapse due to erosion and things. I know one of your staff was actually virtual at those planning commission meetings, but I know that a lot of the neighbors that have come forward at planning commission that haven't come to council are concerned about, you know, the runoff of the water and the retaining wall. So is that something that you guys have on your radar when the site plan comes forward on this specific?
Mr. Cobb?
Mayor, through you to Councilman Johnson. Yes, sir, we do. And I began to look at a few of the details myself on this one. They'll have to over detain that existing pond because there is some release that's going to occur. So it's on our radar, and we're fully on board.
Anybody else on the governing body? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? This final plat is also adopted.
Next item is twenty C, contract between the City of Cheyenne, Office of Youth Alternatives, and the Laramie County Community Juvenile Services Joint Powers Board for a juvenile diversion coordinator to provide diversion-related services.
All right, is there anybody in the audience want to speak to this contract? Hearing none. Dr. Aldridge?
Mr. Mayor, this item was reviewed under the other items for the agenda at the December sixth, twenty-twenty-four Finance Committee meeting. Therefore, provisions of Title II of City Code have been met. Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve an amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and thirty cents, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. White. Comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The contract is approved.
Next item is twenty-one A, contract modification number one to contract number seventy-seven-seven-two between the City of Cheyenne and State of Wyoming, Office of State Lands and Investments to increase the grant award from one million to one million four-hundred-twenty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-twelve dollars for the Van Buren Avenue Storm Sewer Interceptor Project.
Well, normally when we get letters from the state, they have bills in them, but this one was good news. It offered us an additional four-hundred-thousand dollars towards this project because other communities were not able to spend their ARPA money in a timely enough fashion, and we were able to do that. So quite a gift to the city of Cheyenne. Is there anybody in the audience would like to speak to the four-hundred-thousand dollar addition to our grant? Hearing none. Dr. Aldridge?
Mr. Mayor, this item was reviewed under other items for the agenda at the December sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four Finance Committee meeting. Therefore, provisions of Title II of City Code have been met. Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve an amount of four-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-twelve dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. White. Comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The grant, or the contract modification is approved.
Next item is twenty-four A, reappointments of Kevin Painter to the Cheyenne Airport Board, Scott Homer to the Fire Civil Service Commission, Don Harold, Millward Simpson, Josh Kreisler, and Gary Sims to the Historic Preservation Board, Boyd Wiggum and Megan Connor to the Planning Commission, Erin LeBlanc and Linda Burt to the Board of Adjustment, Jason Powell, Jason Stephen, and Paul Palmeroy to the Contractor Licensing Board, and Randy Byers and Joss Morris to the Building Code Board of Appeals.
All right, I would entertain a motion on those appointments.
So move.
It's been Dr. Aldridge, seconded by Mr. Escobell. Okay, all those in favor of the reappointments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The reappointments are approved.
Next item is twenty-four B, appointments of Tom Roberts to the Police Civil Service Commission, Daniel Meyer to the Building Code Board of Appeals, Brian Finnmore to the Contractor Licensing Board, and Rebecca Millet, Tom Gallagher, Gregory Smith, and Deisha Hunter to the Mayor's Council for People with Disabilities.
Again, I would entertain a motion for those appointments.
So move.
It's been moved by Dr. Aldridge, seconded by Mr. Escobell. All those in favor of the appointments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those appointments are also approved.
Voucher report.
All right, is there anybody in the audience or on the governing body that would like to speak to the vouchers? Next item, please.
Revenue report.
Anybody in the audience or the governing body that would like to speak to the revenue report?
Yeah, one, on the revenue report, on the FEMA SAFER Grant reimbursement, August twenty-twenty-four. I know that we put the firefighters on the general fund, but when does our actual SAFER grant exhaust itself?
Two more years. Any other comments on revenue? Hearing none. Next item, please.
Twenty-four E, announcement that the signee die in first regular meetings of the governing body will be held Monday, January sixth, twenty-twenty-five, beginning at ten a.m. in Council Chambers, twenty-one oh-one O'Neal Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, and via electronic conference meeting. Announcement that for calendar year twenty-twenty-five, starting Monday, January sixth, twenty-twenty-five, the Public Services Committee will meet on the first and third Mondays of the month at twelve p.m., noon, and the Finance Committee will meet on the first and third Tuesdays of the month at noon in room one oh-four of the municipal building, twenty-one oh-one O'Neal Avenue. Announcement that a Calcutta Benefiting Make-A-Wish Wyoming will be held on January thirty-first to February first, twenty-twenty-five at Red Lion, two oh-four West Fox Farm Road, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Ten percent of proceeds go to charity, other business.
All right, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to us under other business? Okay, hearing none. How about from the governing body? Mr. Cook?
Mr. Mayor, so I just wanted to use this opportunity, I know maybe I'll get a chance to, to speak at the signee die, but I just really wanted to, there's not a whole lot of city employees here tonight, but I just wanted to say thank you to the city employees that are, that are here for putting up with, with me for twelve years, to be quite honest with you. Contrary to popular belief, I'm not necessarily the most cuddly personality in the world, but, yeah, 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 I mean, really, you should ask my family, they'll, they'll second that. But I just wanted to, I just wanted to, to thank your, your staff, Mr. Mayor, for what they've put up with for me over the last twelve years, but also just a lot of the work that we've been able to do, the things that we've been able to accomplish. I'll miss, I'll miss doing this. So I just wanted to take that opportunity to thank the members of staff that are here, and I hope, I hope I'll get to see some other ones here in a couple of weeks. There will hopefully be more of them there, and, and I've caught a few of them in the hall on the way in here tonight. So I just want to take that opportunity to do that, and I'll, I'll miss working with your staff, Mayor. I think you have some good, some good employees with, with their hearts definitely in the right place and trying to do the best for the citizens. So I just want to take the opportunity to do that.
Thanks, Mr. Cook. We'll get a chance to say goodbye to you on January sixth at our signee die. Mr. Johnson?
Similar ditto in regards to the city staff. As you can tell, tonight was my actual last night, and so I want to tell you all thank you for camping and boards and commissions, you know, audits in regards to that. If anybody that's followed city council and the amount of people in the audience since November fifth, I went out like Miley Cyrus with a wrecking ball. You can, you know, oversized vehicles, downtown parking, you know, other boards and commissions, recreations of boards and commissions. I think I've almost got fourteen different things through council in two months, you know, that I, I was kind of told to wait over the summer because it was election season. I would have, you know, introduced it any time, but, you know, just looking at that, and then, like Councilman Cook said, as far as signee die, in regards to the accomplishments that staff have, you know, accommodated me through, you know, roughly ten years with intermission, but even when I wasn't on council, they were completely accommodating to me just as a citizen that could actually reach out to them. So I too want to thank staff for all the work that they've, you know, assisted with me over the last ten years. And then I'll have something a little more refined for signee die, but don't judge my T-shirt. And I've already been told by multiple staff members that even though City Hall is in the downtown open container district, I'm not allowed to crack one since Wesby's opens at eleven o'clock for Councilman Cook and I to start our pub crawl on January sixth. So I've already been told by staff I'm not allowed to drink on the premises.
Anybody else have something for us?
Mr. Mayor?
Dr. Rennie?
I do want to take this moment to thank council members Cook and Johnson. They have been hardworking and effective representatives of their areas of the community. And I just, I've enjoyed the time I've known them, and I've enjoyed the time they've been here. So I appreciate all the time and effort you two have put in to making Cheyenne a better place. And then I, this is the last official meeting for Chris Jones as our city clerk. And I first met Chris going way back when she was the executive assistant to the council. And she has put in years of service, both as in that position and then as city clerk. And I just wanted to thank her and tell her I appreciate all the work that she's put into the city, and look forward to the next step. It's fun.
I was going to add to that, if I could, that we have actually two directors. This will be their last meeting of us at the governing body. As Dr. Rennie said, our city clerk, Chris Jones, is retiring after a very long career. We, we worked together from her first day. I think I was the president of the city council when she was hired, and we go, we go way back, and I've really enjoyed that. So thank you, Chris. And then our city attorney, Ms. Boster, is, is moving on, and I just want to publicly thank her for her service to our community and to our, our governing bodies. And they've both done a great job, and I just want to say thank you for your capability and for your time. So thank you so much. Do we have any other items, other business? If not, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and we'll see you back here after a great, hopefully, Christmas. Thank you so much.